Call to order the Policy Subcommittee meeting for tonight, January 26th. So roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
All right, so tonight, we are here to discuss Section E of our policy manual. On November 17th, we had a public Subcommittee meeting and discussed a lot of the changes that we were proposing to Section E, went through it line by line at that time. So I don't think we'll need to do that tonight, but I think what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of highlight some of the things that we did talk about, maybe some things that are a little more of higher interest to the community and to some of the members of the committee. So what I'd like to start with is the emergency plans. So that is EB, Section EBC. So give everybody a minute to kind of, if you have your version of it, catch up. Section EBC. And so in that section, what the recommendation was that we adopt the MASC version, but also keep some elements of the LIN version that include media outlets of where we're going to send the information in case of a school closing, and mention that in the beginning of the year, we would notify families where the information would be, whether that's Facebook, text messages, you know, things of that nature, and just kind of get that a little more up to date in terms of where it's at, because right now, it just lists the media outlets. So we thought that might be of high interest to people. Moving forward, again, we did talk about all of this on November 17th, but the things I'm mentioning tonight, again, just kind of my opinion, what I thought would be of importance tonight, building in grounds, so ECAE. So I'll give you guys all a minute, ECAE. Feel like I'm playing bingo. So in that section, that appeared to be more of a job description for the people, so we were thinking maybe that should be with ISD or another body that, you know, kind of houses that type of information, so we'd kind of get rid of that. Then again, ECAF, the security cameras. So again, give you a minute to get to ECAF. I apologize if I'm moving too fast, let me know if you think I am. And I guess this is a question for anybody that we think might be able to answer it. The policy mentions that the footage would be contained in a place.
A physical place.
A physical place.
Yes.
I guess we're a little unsure of what that place is. I don't know, maybe Superintendent Rogero could help out with that.
So our cameras will hold the footage within, every school has like, almost like a digital recorder.
Okay.
And so any recordings that happen from movement in the hallways outside, wherever the cameras are, stores it in those units for 30 days.
Okay.
After 30 days, it disappears.
Okay.
It overrides.
It overrides, sorry.
It overrides, okay. Yes, Member Magnolia.
And are those units physically housed in each individual school?
Yeah.
And is there, this is part of the policy, a specific office that they reside in?
Main office.
In the main office?
The main office, okay.
And there is no cloud storage used for these devices?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. I would, you know what, I don't want to say no, like a definitive no. I think I would need to check with our safety officer to be sure about that, but I don't believe so. I believe it stores it within that unit and then overrides it after 30 days.
Okay.
The specificity of the policy necessitates us writing down exactly which office it is stored in, and so because we didn't know about cloud storage, that would have been a difficult thing to write into the policy.
Main office in every building?
Main office.
So I think that's what we should probably change the wording to.
Yeah, so I think, what we're, yeah, what we discussed at that November meeting was just making sure that this part of the policy accurately reflects storage, because it was written when there were physical tapes. So the storage part of it suggests, like, basically it's in a locked filing cabinet.
I know.
And because that's not the case anymore, we needed to understand how it was being stored now, so that the part of the policy that's about storage is in 2023 and not.
Yeah, my understanding of these units is that they, it records and stores within the unit, and then at 30 days, it overrides, overwrites over those recordings, and those recordings are no longer available.
Okay, so.
But I will double check with Officer Mackin.
Okay, so in the interest of just tonight, maybe we, in the each school's main office?
Each, yeah, I think.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think Member Gailey had her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Gailey, yes, thank you.
I'd like to just go back to the ECAE Building and Grounds Management.
Sure.
This appears to be the job description of a supervisor, custodians, and maintenance, and it should reside someplace other than in the policy manual. I would like to ask the mayor, isn't that ISD fall under the purview of Building and Grounds Committee?
The hiring for ISD?
No, it, the Building and Grounds Management, usually ISD, like, I talk to the person that's in charge of ISD, and if there's a problem or anything that's going on, but I'm not understanding, I guess, Building and Grounds Management, the appearance of a job description of supervisors or custodians?
Yeah, my understanding is that the policy there is actually, what's there is a written job description of a position.
Okay.
Which is a supervisor, custodians, and maintenance.
Yep.
So that would not be under the school committee, because it's the hiring.
That's under.
It's under ISD.
ISD, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Member Gailey. Did I miss anybody, or? Yes, Member Capola.
Just wondering on the EBC, the emergency plan.
Mm-hmm.
You say you're going to adopt the MASC version. Do I have a copy of that some?
Um, so that was.
So that, that copy was sent to us electronically. It had the markup with the MASC. So the MASC version basically is large and broad enough that we don't need separate guidelines for a disaster versus a fire drill versus a bomb threat. So the recommendation is to adopt that policy, but the specificity that Member Dugan mentioned about media outlets is necessary for us to keep within this policy because of how the community uses our school lots during an emergency. So that's the only difference to the MASC policy that we're recommending, is that we keep that part about the news outlets in it. Otherwise, the MASC policy is broad enough to cover all of these. Ours is not right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Magnolia. Okay, and then one other thing at the very end, and then we'll circle back around to transportation. Again, this is, I thought, might be of interest to the public, the meals policy. So that is EFD, let me put my glasses on, make sure, yes, EFD, meal charge policy. So again, I'll give everyone a moment to get to that. This, right now, we have, you know, the federal money that, free meals for our families. So that would be if needed, if the federal money ever dries up for any reason. Mr. McHugh, yes?
We just had a oversight audit today, it's completed today, and as part of the debriefing that we, even though we're CEP, we do not charge, we have, we are required to still update if a child was to buy a second lunch.
Okay.
So we're going to be coming to you with some amendments to that policy.
Okay.
To address some issues. So I would not recommend adopting anything tonight on that policy.
Okay.
Because once we get the guidance after today, we'll be coming back, because we haven't done anything, because every child gets a free meal, but they still have to have a meal charge policy in place, and they're going to be given a letter with recommendations to do that. So once we get that, we will bring it back to the full committee at that time, and we can address that policy.
Okay, Member Magnolia, yes?
Yeah, so interestingly, one of the changes we made, we, and I'm sure that we'll still look at what these recommendations are, is that we added the phrase "if there is a charge" in a couple different places, just so that if we were in the situation where there were no longer free meals, I wonder if it's going to cover what they're recommending, too. We'll see once we get those recommendations.
Right, and it may, it may, the way you have a word, it may be fine, but we still have to come and get an approval of the school committee, so it's on file with the DESI.
Okay. So we will add, if the exception of EFD.
Yeah.
Put a hold on EFD.
Yep.
Okay, great. And other than that, like I've mentioned a few times now, we did have a public meeting on November 17th. We went through it line by line. The one part we didn't cover on November 17th, I was hoping Charlie Gallo and Dorothy Presser could kind of help us out with that, that's the transportation policy, which they got together and helped us out with. And while they come to the microphone, I do want to publicly thank them for all their hard work on this, and Member Magnolia, this is quite a task getting through all these things, so thank you. So if you guys could kind of help us, walk us through the transportation changes, if
So good evening, and thank you. Dorothy will, I think, do the more detailed review, but just in terms of broad overview, myself, Dorothy, and Johani Castillo, who is the new transportation manager, had the pleasure of working together, both to update our policies, and as has been a theme of this review, parse out procedure versus policy. So a lot of what you'll hear tonight is deletion of procedures, and then where there are policies, updating of those policies, and then as to the specifics, I'll turn to Ms. Presser.
Okay, thank you very much. So we started out, the transportation policies all start with the letter EE and go on through. The first one, the first policy, we rewrote essentially, and I hope that you had gotten a copy of that. It had a lot of procedure in it. So the new policy is much broader and talks basically about who is eligible for transportation services. And then there were some parts of it that came out, because they would be covered under places as, like in an IEP, and so some unnecessary, in the policy, in this policy, sort of unnecessary detail was taken out. So then we move on to that, then the EEHR-1 and -R-2 were also very much procedural, so we would recommend that those be deleted. Then EEA, which was student transportation services, we would recommend just keeping it as it is. There was just a very simple, in the policy, we've sort of been changing school system to school district wording, but that was the only change that we would recommend there. And then EEA, walkers and riders, was essentially the information that is now in the rewritten EE, so we would recommend deleting EEA. EEA-R, again, was mostly procedure, so we would recommend that that be moved to the appropriate place for the procedure rather than the policy manual. The same thing is true with EEA-C-R, it's about school bus scheduling and routing, as mostly procedure. In EEA-E, the LIN version really only covered emergency bus drills, and the MASC version included this, as well as inspections of the vehicles, so we would recommend in that one, adopting the AS, I'm sorry, the MASC version. Then in EEA-E-R-1, school bus safety program, we would recommend replacing that with the MASC version of the school bus safety program. EEA-E-R-2 was really more geared towards bus, rules for the bus drivers, which is really targeted just to the bus driver, so we figured that belonged in a manual for the bus drivers or not, you know, not the, at the level of the district manual, so we would recommend that that reside in a better place and be deleted from the district manual. EEA-EA, there actually, there were two versions of this policy that were both from LIN, and one actually was the MASC version. So we thought that the one that most closely matched the MASC version, that had, was the one to adopt. The Drug and, EEA-E-1, drug and alcohol testing for school, bus, and commercial vehicle drivers, we recommend using the MASC version. Again, the LIN version happened to have two choices of wording in it, and one of them was the MASC version, so we figured that was the way to go. Bus driver examination and training, again, appeared to be procedure rather than policy, so we would recommend rescinding that. That was EEA-EA-R, now I'm thinking about bingo. EEA-EC, student conduct on school buses, there, the LIN version was very detailed about rules and regulations and exact, perhaps violations of, yeah?
Start in here. Can you say that one more time, so I don't?
Yeah, there, I, when I was looking through, it was missing in mine, too.
Okay.
So we may need to get that to you.
Okay.
Did you not have it either?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, so maybe we'll put that one aside. It was, pardon?
I do have it on the one that was sent to us, yeah.
Huh, interesting.
Not in the, in the recommendations, though, just in the actual policy.
Oh, no, I missed it in the recommendations, but it's in the, it's in the policy, yeah.
It's in the policy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the recommendations, if you look at the policy, the MASC version is very sort of high level, you know, good conduct is expected, the same way you would expect conduct in any other aspect of your school, activities at school building. And the LIN version was very detailed in, like, no gum, you know, sort of going into a lot of detail, that really didn't belong at the level of the policy manual, so we would recommend using the MASC version of that. EEA-I, student transportation records and reports, again, seem like policy, I mean, I'm sorry, procedure, so we would recommend that that be rescinded, and again, reside with the transportation or the, you know, the appropriate department. EEA-G, student transportation in private vehicles, the note I got was not allowed, take this out, so recommend rescinding that one. And then the one that would be an add, would be EEA-J, which is motor vehicle idling on school grounds. And that's the end of the transportation policies.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Gallo or Mrs. Presser? All right, seeing no questions, Member Magnolia?
I would like to move the changes as recommended by MASC.
Except of?
Oh, with the exception of, which one?
One second?
EFD.
EFD.
Oh, EFD.
Yep.
And move to the full committee?
And move it to the full committee.
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, everybody. Again, that's, that was a lot to get through. Section E is quite lengthy, and we had a lot of work ahead of us as well, so we're looking forward to it. Okay, so our next item on the agenda for the Policy Subcommittee is the nondiscrimination anti-harassment policy, which Attorney Gallo is going to present for us.
Thank you, good evening, for the record, Charlie Gallo, compliance officer for the LIN Public Schools. In your packets was a copy of the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy. Within that policy, on page four, you will see a proposed strike through after extensive consultation with your attorney, Attorney Greenspan, who couldn't be here for the Policy Subcommittee but wished to, through me, express his advice. That is an appeal procedure that is not required, and the advice that he has given is that it's appeal procedure that's really not appropriate, because it would potentially put in the public view confidential personnel matters, and additionally give, you know, possible, you know, at least, some people may think that those personnel matters are being looked at in a political light, as opposed to through a personnel light. So his strong advice is to delete that. And while we're here, I just had a couple of other mentions I wanted to do, part and parcel with the deletion of that paragraph. On the bottom, or in the discrimination, harassment, and retaliation prohibited section on page three, there's a phrase "and/or" school committee that should be deleted if you delete that appeal procedure. In addition to that, under the discrimination, harassment, and retaliation prohibited, since we're here, I would recommend that we add in specific language to note that athletics are covered. And then finally, this policy is a few years old, and at the time this policy was drafted, I think we weren't as mindful about gender inclusivity and pronouns and the like, and so that this Subcommittee could also make a directive to update in those ways. So with that, happy to answer any questions on this as well.
Okay, Member Casianos.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo, I appreciate the explanation and rationale for that strike. Just a question around the actual procedure. Are we in any situation where we need to follow through with any type of appeal process now? Are we in the clear to strike it?
Um.
Or, like, because I know, like it says, I'd never experienced this yet, so I just wanted to know if, like, if we don't, if, do we have anything in the pipeline that might interfere with, would it be an issue to strike it?
I, I probably, as to specific circumstances, you know, we, you know, wouldn't discuss those here, but what I can say is that your attorney's advice was to strike it, you know, immediately.
Member Capola.
Okay, on the, on Attorney Gallo, where it says, well, I think that must be page, page one of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, when a third line up from the top paragraph there, it said, "school or at school-sponsored events."
Yes.
We get a lot of calls about after-school bus incidents.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes they're students who we've given them bus passes to, not to mention any of our special A kids that are on buses. Is there a possibility of including that, only because we hear that a lot?
Yeah, so I think it's a great, great point. That, so we're doing potentially, or at least I'm suggesting, we do a tweak under discrimination, harassment, and retaliation prohibited on page three that relates to athletics. I think we could just as easily also add something that relates to school-based transportation, and I think it would be a great suggestion. So if I may, one suggestion for the Subcommittee to consider would be to revise, so on page three, we're under discrimination, harassment, and retaliation prohibited, the language now is discrimination or harassment in any form for any reason is absolutely forbidden, and maybe the suggestion would be we add a comma and say "including without limitation as it relates to athletics and school-based transportation." And that, Ms. Capola, if that would satisfy?
Yes, Superintendent Rogero, of course.
I just want to clarify, Member Capola, you're referring to also the MBTA buses?
I am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Okay. I mean, we give them the bus passes.
Yeah, I think if we just.
That's where a lot of incidences happen.
I think if we say "school-based," if we're funding it, that would be clear enough, I think. I will also tell you that I expect in a, so the current, a lot of this is driven by federal law, and the current administration is looking at all of this and looking to change some things that the prior administration did, so I would not be surprised if we're back here, you know, in a year's time or something, looking at this policy as, again, just as a preview of things to come.
Okay, seeing no more questions from the Committee, Member Magnolia?
I'd like to move changes to the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy as outlined in our addendum here. Striking the paragraph on page four, adding to the discrimination, harassment, and retaliation section on page three, athletics and school-based transportation, revising the entire policy to be gender inclusive, and changing any language that would necessitate as a result of the struck policy.
Second, yeah, that's okay. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. Oh, and I also move to, put it to the full committee, sorry. Trying to get the details out.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Attorney Gallo, for, again, your diligent work, as always. Valued member of our team, for sure.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Member Magnolia?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, adjourns the Policy Subcommittee.
Including but not limited to special. It's nice. Other. Free by school. Going to call the Policy Subcommittee meeting and the committee of the whole meeting.
Personnel.
Oh, personnel, there you go. What did I say?
Policy, that's okay.
I got my finger right in personnel, policy. Personal.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, we have one item on the air, a job description approval, we're looking for from manager of translation interpretation under compliance. Superintendent Eriel?
Yes, I think we all know our need for translation in our district is vast. Right now, a position sits in the compliance office supervised by Mr. Gallo, and the need for translation and interpretation is growing. We're very proud of the progress we've made in that department and in this work. We currently, as we know, LPS's English-speaking household numbers is in a steady decline, 38.6% English, 35.6% English in, that was 2020, 2021, 35.6 in 21, 2021, 22, and 32.6 English this year. So our English population is declining. LPS's Spanish-speaking household numbers is on the steady incline, however. We were 52.5% Spanish in 2021, 55.6 Spanish in 21, 22, and this year, we are 58.2%. And there's a steady approximately 10% of all other languages as well, and so there is a dire need for translation and doing it well. We currently have a position that is not in the union, it's a contracted position, and we really need to elevate that position. This position is already supervising our family and community coordinators that are in our school, provides monthly meetings for them, provides professional development for them. That position oversees all needs of translation and translators from agencies sending out to where we need them, personnel who we have who does translations for meetings, and this position also oversees the education of developing the translation interpreter skill, so that our staff have the credentials to be interpreters/translators. So we really need to, I'm going to use the word beef up, this position. And so what I'm asking is, there's a position that, posting that you have, that we're asking for you to approve, it would become part of the LSAA union, the union is on board, they worked with us on the posting and have approved the posting. The union is on board, they worked with us on the posting and have approved the posting as, so long as you approve it. And in terms of cost, it's a slight increase to what the, the position currently costs in our, in our budget. So, you know, I opened up to any questions you might have about this position, but I do think we all know this is, this is a very valuable piece for our district.
Dr. Magnolia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Rogero. I'm wondering if I can make a friendly suggestion under the qualifications, education, and experience section. Repeated two times is the five-year successful work experience that includes minimum three years' experience is required. And in both of these, we're looking for someone who has experience in an urban educational setting, that's the preferred. But I was wondering if we can take the minimum three years' experience and write in education, in the educational or medical field. And the reason that I'm making this suggestion is because translation services for the types of translation we're looking for, these are transferable skills if someone has worked for a large hospital system in an urban area, has, has worked for a large medical group. And so it's one of the few positions that I've seen come before the personnel committee where it seems like education isn't the only background that would set someone up well for that. So I'm wondering if that would be considered acceptable to you to change that three years' experience in education, in the educational or medical field is required?
I don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Gaitley?
I know that our interpretation and translation has been increasing. It has at City Hall increased, and I think that a manager to help with all of this work from all of these people that are being hired to help with interpretation and translation would really be neat, really needed. So I think it's a good idea, it was already approved by the LSAA, so I think I'm for it.
I just want to also give you just a little context, even in just the meetings that are held that need to be translated. In seventeen eighteen, we had a thousand forty meetings, eighteen nineteen, thirteen hundred forty-six. We only had a thousand fifty-one in nineteen twenty, but I think we know why. Fourteen hundred thirty-seven in twenty-twenty-one, and last year, twenty-two seventy-three. So the need is there, it's clear, we need quality translators and interpreters that will represent our families appropriately.
And we definitely need a manager. We need a manager for them.
To oversee the many, and to further develop, you know, Mr. Gallo and I have many conversations about this, and, you know, we want to develop within, we want to develop our own people to be solid translators and interpreters that, you know, now they, they would have a skill. We're invested in doing that, we're, you know, we're, we're looking at it in our budget to, the program that we have been using was funded through a grant, UMass?
Correct.
And the grant has dried up, basically, but we are continuing because we see the value in building our own capacity within our own staff.
Yes.
I'd like to move the position of the manager of translation and interpretation with the changes as noted to the full committee.
Second. Just have a few questions.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, no problem, it works for the moment. On the certification pieces, we just, in our contracts, had something where people get a thousand dollars if they pass that test where they speak it, read it, write it.
Mm-hmm.
Have the oral, okay, or is any of this on there? Because I think-
Any of these certifications?
It says one certificate, but I'm wondering if that should be sort of a requirement for this job in particular.
Well, so it says, it says one certification, but then if you look in the parentheses, it gives a litany of options.
Right, for the one, but, oh, so sorry, okay. I almost feel like it should be something plus that for this particular job.
Well, they do need a master's degree.
Okay, but the thing I'm talking about is, we put in contracts and we tested people.
Correct, the stamp language proficiency test is listed there. That's the test we, we did.
Exactly, so if somebody comes in and they have something other than that, I, I would assume then that they would go and try to test under that if they didn't have it.
Yes, yes, we could do, we could do that, but there are also other assessments listed here that they also, if they had already done, could count, but we, we provide the stamp test, Mr. Gallo?
Yes, no, that's correct, and just, so there is not in education a certification around translation interpretation, so we can't just simply say, you know, the education certification. So that, that's why we give that, that group, the stamp of those is one of them that is probably on, on the sort of lesser end in terms of difficulty to attain.
Okay.
So, so if they have that, that is of course great and something the district recognizes, but if they have one of the others, that may be potentially above and beyond as well.
Great, thank you. And you said that there's a slight increase, what is the amount of the increase?
Do you happen to know, Kevin?
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, there you go.
What is it?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Thank you.
It's a little more than slight, but, okay, is there any other questions? No. Okay, roll call, please. Did we have a second?
Oh, yeah, we did have a second.
I did, I said second.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Order the second regular meeting of the school committee, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Would also like to welcome our new student representative, Victoria Samuel, from English High School. Welcome, Victoria.
Welcome.
Very glad to have you here.
Dogs.
All right, we all please rise for a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the minutes.
Thank you. Make a motion to accept, I don't think I have. Make a motion to accept the curriculum updates on instructional tech, oh, sorry about that, first regular meeting on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close eyes, have it. All right, next item is the curriculum updates.
So we have members of our curriculum department as part of updating you of the work that we do in our district. We wanted to share with you at each content, so over the next few meetings, you'll have different representation from our curriculum department to update you on their content and what we're doing in our schools. Turn it over to you ladies.
Okay, welcome to the first of the series. Linda was unable to attend today, she was planning to open due to a lockdown, so. I'm Shannon Van Vliet, I will be presenting tonight about instructional technology, and I am joined by Leah Stelges, who will be presenting about science, and Kristen Tabacco, who will be sharing exciting happenings in social studies.
Thank you.
In February, early childhood, English language arts, and mathematics will present their updates, and then in March, world languages, fine arts, music, and health and PE will be presented. Just a quick update from the curriculum team as a whole, we are working to develop a mission and vision which will be presented here at a later date aligned with the exit goals of our district. All right, so on to my updates. Tonight I will really focus on elementary and how far we have come. We're in year two of having instructional technology teachers in our buildings. We are using units designed by teacher teams over the summer, which are grounded in the Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science 2016 Framework. The four major strands taught are computing in society, which is ethics and online safety, digital tools and collaboration, computing systems, which is coding and networking, and computational thinking. I'm now going to highlight some of the resources purchased by the district to support and enhance student learning in these units. I usually don't have a problem with volume. So using the twenty, so in twenty twenty-two, Massachusetts, DESI came out with the Digital Literacy and Computer Science Curriculum Guide, and from that we were able to purchase several items to teach coding in our schools. The next couple slides will show you how students are using physical computing and coding beginning in pre-K. So I did bring some show and tell. So the first up is B-bots, and these are so cool. These are teaching our youngest students the beginning steps of programming, which involve collaborative problem solving and following multiple step directions. Next up, I have Ozobots. So these little ones are used by upper elementary. They use block coding and color combinations to move the students on a path. So for example, different color combinations will make the robot turn a different direction, it will speed up, slow down, it lights up, it spins, it can make a few different noises. As you can imagine, the kids are highly engaged when these come out. Next, we have Makey Makey, and these are used K to five. So using this, an invention kit, and it connects everyday objects to be computer keys. So using a circuit board, alligator clips, a USB cable, students use closed loop electrical signals to send the computer a message. So it mimics a keyboard or a mouse, it lets you control your computer with everyday objects. So students can get creative, they can turn Play-Doh, fruits, vegetables into keys. They can program it as a remote control in a game, and some of our music teachers are using it, they turn bananas into a piano. All right, very exciting. We want to thank those of you that were able to attend our first annual STEAM fair, K-8. The fair was held during the statewide Massachusetts STEM Week in October. The theme was See Yourself in STEM. As a district, we had collaboration across every letter in STEAM. We did science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We were able to engage hundreds of our families, students, teachers, and community partners with over thirty hands-on interactive displays. We had rocket building, color science, slime making, sound waves, digital microscopy, virtual reality, robotics, 3D printing, and touch tanks, and there were, and more. Our community partners included Northeastern University, Science from Scientists, The Food Project, Friends of Lynn and the Hunt Beach. And I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Leah.
As Shannon already introduced, my name is Leah Stelges, and I'm the Assistant Director of Science. Shannon's slide on the STEAM fair is a perfect transition over into our conversation on science. Before I share some science-specific updates, I really want to start by reiterating my excitement about this event this fall, and my appreciation for the teachers, staff, students, families, community members, and school committee members who were able to participate. So thank you again. So I had the pleasure of last presenting to the full committee in January of 2020, when I shared the development of a five-year, pre-K through twelve strategic plan for science, which aligns with and supports the LPS district strategic plan. Since this 2020 presentation, unprecedented events have highlighted the incredible significance of high-quality science education, as well as the pressing needs of our most marginalized students, thus driving the revision of the plan throughout the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. You have a copy of the full revised version in your packet, the plan. This revised version is grounded in the vision of equitable access to high-quality science education for our diverse student population. I would like to take a moment to read the vision statement aloud. Drawing upon the assets of our community, families, students, and educators, the Lynn Public Schools Science Curriculum Department commits to working collaboratively to provide equitable access to high-quality science education that is targeted to meet the needs of our diverse student population. Towards this end, we will focus on the implementation of high-quality instructional materials, assessments, and educator professional development. We will leverage connections between science in the real world and students' lived experiences so that our students can thrive, advance, and impact the greater community and our interconnected global society. We are a community of lifelong learners that will grow together and use data-driven systems of continuous improvement to inform our decision-making. So this comprehensive plan, including multiple strategic objectives and initiatives, will serve as a guide for addressing the various needs in pre-K through twelve science moving forward and ultimately supporting student success. In order to bring the science strategic plan to life, various teams of LPS educators have been established. These teams have been intentionally designed to be sustainable and ongoing, meaning consistently to monitor progress and address specific needs. This visual roughly shows how these eleven leadership teams are organized and how they will work in tandem to make progress towards specific objectives and initiatives in the plan, as noted by the codes in parentheses. Included in your packet is a brief description of the purpose of each of these teams. Six of the eleven teams shown in green have already been established and their work is underway. Two of the eleven shown in yellow are scheduled to begin this spring. The top portion of this visual, indicated with the arrow, shows two teams that will evaluate progress and determine next steps related to the strategic plan and vision overall. The teams shown in the middle will address key areas within the plan, including high-quality instructional materials, assessments, lab safety, and STEM enrichment. These key areas relate to all grade spans, pre-K through twelve, and the work of these teams will inform the grade span-specific teams shown in the bottom section of the While these grade span-specific teams in the bottom section of the visual are titled, quote, "Curriculum Councils," the purpose of these teams is to establish and conduct quality reviews and needs assessments, not only related to curriculum resources, but also to lab materials, educator professional development opportunities, and course pathways. Not only are these teams establishing systems and structures to sustainably address the comprehensive needs in pre-K through twelve science, but they are also supporting the development of teacher leaders district-wide. Finally, I want to share some exciting new technology that is available to teachers and students in secondary science classrooms, thanks to the hard work of Dr. Kurt Barcalow. Dr. Barcalow has been a biology teacher at Fecto Leary for nineteen years and acted as Assistant Director of Science while I was out on maternity leave throughout the twenty twenty-one school year. During this time, Kurt supported the purchase of a classroom set of Class VR, virtual reality goggles for each middle school, and a new Olympus CX-43 microscope with advanced optics and digital camera for our secondary schools. The virtual reality goggles provide exciting enhancements to middle school science learning through both virtual and augmented reality experiences. The virtual reality experiences place students in a new real-life environment, such as a coral reef or mountain range. In the augmented reality experiences, artificial objects are seen over the current environment. Experiences can be teacher-led whole group or independent, determined by student exploration and individual learning needs. The Olympus CX-43 microscope capabilities are beyond that of a typical student laboratory microscope, featuring various imaging options, including digital, bright field, dark field, and phase contrast. Aside from bright field- and phase contrast. Aside from bright field, these imaging options have not been readily available in our secondary schools. The microscopes further support the engaging, hands-on, standards-based learning experiences for students in the life sciences and the study of tissue and cellular structures. With that as my final update, I'm pleased to pass the presentation along to my colleague.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Tobacco, and as the new Assistant Director of History, pre-K to 12, I'm proud to be here, sharing with you some of the exciting things that are happening in the social studies and civic spaces in our district. First, I am pleased to be offering an upcoming professional development offered to all Grade 6 through 12 social studies teachers, including special education and our EL cohort teachers. In February and March, its title is Academic Discourse in the Secondary Social Studies Classroom: Let's Get Students Talking. This PD is prepared in collaboration with our MLE and Special Education Assistant Directors and Coaches to ensure that all students benefit from the strategies teachers will be learning in the course. In the fall of 2022, many of our U.S. History II teachers in Grade 10 attended a workshop I facilitated here at Bennett Street. Teachers from English, Classical, and Tech collaborated on planning their Action Civics project units. This district-wide collaboration allowed teachers to share best practices and problem solve together to deliver an engaging and meaningful experience for all students. That leads us into my second topic, our work on civic education. This year, we've continued our partnership with Generation Citizen, who was brought in as a district partner a few years ago by Shannon Gardner. Generation Citizen's professional development, training, and coaching and support has been critical in delivering excellent instruction for our students. The history curriculum department has worked collaboratively with the multilingual learner and special education departments to support teachers in this important work all year long. All Grade 8 and Grade 10 teachers, the grades that are responsible for implementing the Action Civics project, have either been fully trained or almost completed their two-year Coming up in the spring of 2023, we will once again be holding celebrations of student work. Each middle and high school will hold its own Civics Day, dates to be determined soon, and then we will be celebrating citywide on May 16th. School committee members, consider this, you are saving the date and mark it in your calendar. Expect an invitation soon. The year will culminate on June 5th with a statewide civic showcase where students will present and compete with all Massachusetts Generation Citizen Partner districts, again being held at the Edward Kennedy Institute in Boston. The last item for tonight concerns the new genocide education law that was signed by Governor Charlie Baker in the winter of, or fall of 2021. A generous grant accompanied the law that would help districts expand their lens and understanding of genocide and human rights. I'm proud to announce that LPS has been awarded the Genocide Education Grant in the sum of $60,000 over the next year and a half. We will be using this grant for many exciting things, including integrating units of study into the existing social studies curriculum, building educator capacity through professional development, and facilitating professional learning communities. We will be partnering with outstanding scholars and organizations through the grant, including Professor Christopher Moriello and his team at the Center for Holocaust and Genocide Studies at Salem State University, and Carl Holbert, who will help us, help educate us on the Rwandan genocide and teaching methods around it. We plan to host guest speakers and develop opportunities for students to engage in meaningful discourse around genocide prevention. Next week, I am meeting with faculty members from the Asian American Studies Department at the School for Global Inclusion and Social Development at UMass Boston to explore some of the ways that we can include Asian American voices in the curriculum, especially in regards to the Cambodian genocide. I'm so excited for the important work ahead of us.
All right. At this point, we've reached the end of our presentation. Thank you for your time. We look forward to the next curriculum department update, where our colleagues will be able to share their exciting updates. And at this point, we can take any questions that you have.
Member Gailey, Member Dugan, Member Castellanos, and Member Peña.
I knew you would be ready for me. I have to say that I am so impressed, teaching science throughout my whole career. I just am so thrilled that from K through 12, students are going to learn about technologies. So when they walk into your class, if you're teaching eighth grade, or if you're teaching 10th grade biology, they will have a background knowledge so you can move faster through the curriculum that is mandated by the state. And I'm very thrilled to see that. So I just made some notes. One thing, in instructional technology, you know, someday you're going to have to show me how the B-bots work and interact with the Ozobots and the Makey Makey. Okay, I would like to see that, right? The pre-K through eight STEM Fair, I mean STEAM Fair, was outstanding. As I moved through all the exhibits, they just got better and better and better, and I just was thrilled with it. My student, school committee member, she is going to go into science in her future career in college. Is it Mrs. Stelges? No. Stelges. I am just so thrilled with your science leadership. This I hold dear to my heart. The only thing, as I was reading through your hierarchy here, the HS Science Steering Committee, do you have student involvement on that? Because she might want to be on it.
Getting student input and involvement is a fantastic idea. That's actually the one, one of the ones that hasn't been established yet, but I think that that's a great, that's a great perspective on that. And I also wanted to just mention that throughout all of those kind of committees, we're looking at different ways that all kind of stakeholder voices can be included in the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last but not least, I'm going to go to history, don't worry. The new technology in secondary science, the class virtual reality headsets. Oh my God. You don't know, my master's thesis was on aligning the biology standards in a virtual reality. I had to leave virtual reality because it was too expensive, so I made a video game concept that would align the students to go through a video game for each one of the standards so that they would learn them, not only learn them, but they would know them. It cost too much money to make games back then, because we're talking a long time ago, but the idea was there, and I'm so thrilled. And when I got to the exhibit and I saw that, that microscope, oh my God. That was just something I would dream about, those microscopes.
President, we have to thank Dr. Barcalow at Fecto Leary for that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Barcalow at Fecto Leary. Then into history, and I'll be faster, I'm going to go faster. I loved the civics education project last year. I absolutely love walking through City Hall and seeing all the projects, and I really, really, really look forward to seeing this year's presentation. And I didn't get a chance to put it in my phone, but I will. And then the genocide education grants that was awarded to our district, I love. And I didn't know if our school committee student, this is her first day, so I don't want to put her on the spot, but if she has any input on any of these areas, not right now, but I took up too much time, but if you do, please do. And I want to thank you all very much. Thank you for your support, Superintendent. Have a great day and keep up the good work. I love it.
Member Dugan.
All right. Yeah, just to echo Member Gailey's words, I was also able to, actually, we walked together, didn't we? Yeah, we were together at the STEAM Fair. And the VR, I mean, I could have just sat there for, it was, it was really cool. And congratulations on the grant. That's always great news for a school committee, I think, and money. So that's nice. My question is about the B-bots, the Ozobots, and Makey Makey. That's awesome just saying it. So, you know, again, being an elementary teacher myself, I can imagine the excitement that the kids have over those things. And so my question is, how often do the students get to use those? And is there, you know, is a technology teacher that I'm guessing works in conjunction with the classroom teacher? And so how often does this happen for the children?
So our elementary students have technology class once a week for 40 minutes.
Okay.
And we cycle them through. So mostly, pre-K to 2 is using these, doesn't require a computer, and they, they learn by pushing the keys. And then 3 to 5, they're using these, which do require a computer and block coding.
That sounds great. Yeah, and I love the, that you're teaching them coding. I mean, that's such like a modern, you know, thing.
Oh, and they love it.
Yeah, I can imagine, and it really is preparing them for, you know, the future. So, great work. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I look forward to hearing from you again soon.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Tough act to follow, remember Gailey and Dugan, you know. It's a, the instructional technology portion of tonight's presentation is very inspiring. To see the computing systems, well, all four major strands that are taught, it's 21st century learning, and to see that they're getting exposed that young is very important, you know, and the curiosity, you know, to, to go into that field is, you know, I think when we're young, they're so, they're like sponges, you know, and you never know. And that's preparing them for the future. I think when we look at careers and industrial parks with technology jobs, they pay very well. And to get, to get young people excited about tech, especially in our urban district, where, you know, we, for years and decades have been at a disadvantage, to get that type of curriculum exposure and the type of leadership and passion that Lorraine, remember Gailey just mentioned, it's vital. That STEM Fair, unfortunately, I had, I had family issues that day. I could not go, but I heard a lot about it. I got to see a lot of the exhibits, and it was remarkable to see post-pandemic, you know, and those are some of the things that we are really like starting to come back in full momentum, and it's exciting. The civics, it is one of my favorites, I'm not going to lie. I'm very big on that event. It's one I can't wait. I put it in to my schedule in my mind. I'll put it in, as soon as you leave, I swear, I'll put it right there in the schedule. And the grant that we got, the genocide grant from the state, was it some, was it a grant that we wrote? Or was it?
I, oh, sorry. I wrote it with, with some help from Shannon Gardner, who was in this position before, and our grant writer. Yeah, so I chose to apply for that, though.
I want to say thank you, because whenever we do get grants, I want to recognize the folks that, that go through that process. It's pretty rigid. It takes a lot of work. It's definitely much appreciated, as, as Member Dugan mentioned. Whenever we can get funding mechanisms outside of the box, it's, it's vital. And also, it does allow for us to have a creative opportunity. Like, when you look at the Salem State University partnership with Professor Christopher Moriello.
Moriello, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting to see the, what comes about after those, those smaller grants. I always, I always recommend when you, you know, we get these type of grants, I think the networking and the capacity to build upon that is, it's, it's there. I'm just grateful for what the state did, what Governor Baker and his administration signed into, into what needed to be done for genocide education. So, and I want to thank you all for your presentation. I really appreciate it. It was really nice. It was robust, and honestly, one of my favorites, science, history, and information tech. And I do have an Oculus, so I do know what that VR excitement is. And when they're talking about VR in the classroom, I'm like, trust me, I sometimes I get lost in my Oculus. Just, it's a wonderful tool, and it definitely is, it will spark your interest in, in the field. And that's, if we could just tie that into when they're getting into that pathway in high school, getting kids into the mainstream in tech, it's really amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Very, very informative. I wanted to touch on the gadgets. I have a little one, and I'm so impressed with them. I love that, you know. Is that offered to the multi-language learners in different languages, too?
Oh, we have them at every, every elementary.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And then I had a question, Leah, on the leadership teams. You have a the Equitable Science, I don't have my classes assessment advisory committee. Do you have a list of who's part of that committee, who makes that up?
It's still being formed.
Okay.
Yeah, so the intention is to kind of get that team established this spring, but it will be, you know, a team of probably six through eight LPS educators spanning elementary to high school. So similar to the other pre-K through 12 teams in that row, having that kind of representation from each grade span.
Yeah, yeah.
To form the grade span.
Yeah, it'd be great to know, so we can, you know, make sure we have an equitable approach and some equal representation on that. That's what I was looking. And congratulations on the grant. That's, that's awesome, you know. Can't equal enough. And, yeah, the technology, I, we have an Oculus at home, and I'm excited about it. I find myself swinging all over the place. You could get lost in that, but the virtual reality, yeah. I banged my hand a couple of times against the wall. But, yeah, no, this technology is amazing, and I'm excited for our students to have that. And thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
See no further. Oh, yeah, Member Magnolia, yep.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for the presentation. I have a question about how fully staffed our tech teachers are. I happen to have a daughter in elementary school here in Lynn, and there seems to have been a little bit of turnover with her tech teachers. So I'm wondering how easy it is to find those folks. I know they're extenderent. I know they, they move around the system. So, you know, all the amazing curriculum in the world, doesn't matter if you don't have folks to deliver it. So I know that's like a smidge outside of your purview, but if you could just talk a little bit about that. Obviously, science and, you know, history is a little bit different because those are rooted teachers, and then the curriculum is, in the elementary schools is, you know, delivered by the classroom teacher. So anything you can shed light on that, I'd appreciate.
Sure. So we do have 17 positions. Currently, we have two open. We are actively looking to fill. It's hard to get the license because you have to have a different license for two years and be teaching under it to get the K-12 instructional technology license. But DESI is working on an elementary license right now.
Okay. Thank you.
If you know someone, send them two.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies. We are very proud of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for the terrific presentation all the way. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Break that down.
Yeah, I can see all that.
Coding. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Coding's beautiful.
I'm lost. I'm a lettuce person.
All right. Next item are the field trip requests. The first one is English students to Madrid, Barcelona, Spain during February 24 vacation.
Yes, so I'd like to, I highly recommend, I'd like to invite Domingo Castro. He's a teacher at Lynn English High School.
Hey, everyone.
Hello.
Can you share a little bit about what the trip is?
Yes. In February 24, years from now, almost a year from now, we're planning to take a trip to Barcelona, to Madrid. And right now, I have about seven to nine students. And we have a year to get more students to go, and I'm very excited to make it to, because it'll be the first time we do it, because Lynn English has done a trip before to Greece and, I think, Italy. So we just want to expand the knowledge, cultural knowledge of our students, and I think that's a great, great way to do it.
Well, the school committee?
I make a motion to accept the field trip for the English students to Madrid and Barcelona, Spain, February 2024.
Second. Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Enjoy the party. Thank you for all your work. This is great.
I think he was holding his breath.
All right, next one is Greece.
Yes, and so I'd like to welcome up Michael Haddad. Michael has been here before for his trip to Greece.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So my name's Mike Haddad.
So my name is Mike Haddad. I am the department head for World Language at English High School. I want to thank Mr. Castro. I had a vision at the beginning of this year to expand the travel program that I've started at Lynn English. And he took up the call. He took up the challenge, and I'm really excited about his trip to Barcelona and Madrid. This trip to Athens will be the sixth trip that I have run with EF Tours through Lynn English High School. My previous tours, my last three tours, have had approximately 30 students in attendance and five to six teacher chaperones. We alternate every other year between going to Italy and going to Greece. This year, it is Greece. We will be spending a few days in Athens, visiting the Parthenon, do a little shopping in the Plaka. And then we're gonna take a trip to the Oracle of Delphi, hopefully get some Lotto numbers. Powerball's coming up. And then it's gonna be a four-day cruise to some of the various islands of Greece. We will be hitting Mykonos,
Wow.
which is just a quick ferry ride away from Delos, which is the birthplace of Apollo. We will be going to Santorini. We will be going to Ephesus and Crete. So it's gonna be a jam-packed, amazing, wonderful experience. And a number of the students already signed up were on my 2022 trip to Rome and Paris, and they are really excited to go on another adventure.
Great, yeah. Member Gailey, Member Castellanos, and Member Peña.
Are you gonna have Myth Days?
Every Friday. Every Friday.
Member Castellanos.
I make a motion to move forward with the field trip to Greece.
Second.
Member Peña?
Yeah, I'd like to just comment. Is there room for chaperone?
All right, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Congratulations, and best of luck. Sounds terrific.
Thank you all very much, and have a lovely evening.
Have fun.
Classical students to Japan.
Yes, and so Mr. Oral could not be here tonight, but he did send a little blurb that I want to read for you. This trip is focusing on Japan in the 20th century and links strongly to the curriculum in our U.S. History II classes as it deals with the development and dropping of the atomic bombs on Hiroshima and Nagasaki to help end World War II. On this trip, we will be visiting the cities of Tokyo, Yokohama, Hiroshima, and Osaka. This allows us to see multiple areas of the country experiencing travel on bullet trains, trying new foods, and experiencing a wholly different culture from our own. Most importantly, we will be taking time to honor those who lost their lives in a literal flash almost 80 years ago through our visit to the memorial and museum in Hiroshima. When I have been able to be in front of you in the past two years, I have been adamant that experiential learning is a key component to understanding and absorbing the material taught in the classroom, and this trip is no different. It will be an amazing opportunity for our students to see a culture that is vastly different from ours, or even those in Europe. Thank you for the time, and I hope to hear good news of the trip's approval soon, and I highly recommend this trip.
Terrific. What's the word, committee? Yep, Member Peña?
Second. Second, the recommendation to send the kids.
Yep. All right, Japan. And then a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Terrific. Another congratulations to pass along. Great. Next item is Lynn Teachers Union requests permission to continue the practice of presenting awards to deserving students in the graduating classes of the middle and senior high schools. What is the wish of the committee?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, let's have it. Any votes taken in the policy subcommittee, Member Dugan?
Yes, so we had a couple motions. The first was to accept changes to Section E as recommended by the subcommittee, with the exception of Part EFD, which will be presented by Mr. McQ at a later date.
Great. Take that in the form of motion. Any seconds?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, and then our second motion to bring to the full committee was to accept updates to the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy, which includes striking the third paragraph under the appeal process, adding athletics and school-based transportation to paragraph, excuse me, one, under discrimination and harassment and retaliation prohibited, and changing the pronouns and acknowledgement of gender equity.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right, motion to amend the agenda to move executive session to the last item.
No.
Oh, personal, I'm sorry. Yeah, Member Capola.
Okay, Subcommittee recommended to move to the full committee the creation of a new job manager of translation interpretation under compliance.
Still move.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right, now the motion for the agenda.
I'd like to move that we move the agenda so that the superintendent's report comes next on the agenda, and executive session comes at the end.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Okay, my quote this month is really about supporting others. Helping one person might not change the whole world, but it could change the world for one person. We've begun our process for developing the fiscal year 2024 budget. We've released the budget workbook for our principals and district department heads to complete. Our budget collaborative meetings with all principals and department heads will be scheduled over the next few weeks to allow for support in the process, questions to be answered, and presentations of needs. We are on track to complete school council meetings featuring an agenda item soliciting input on the budget at each of the 27 schools. We will also create an online survey to gather input and hear the voices and the needs from our families, students, and the parent advisory councils for special education and English learners. The release of the governor's budget is not finalized at this point and is an important piece of information to have before we can provide a draft of the fiscal year 24 budget to the school committee. As we enter this budget development season, I will provide more updates as they become available. This year, more than any, has proven to be a challenging, has proved to be a challenge in managing discipline and providing students who are struggling with educational plans that meet their needs while working through the discipline process. While tutoring and online classes work for some, it does not work for all. All of our community partners are important and a valuable resource to us. The Boys and Girls Club has been a strong partner with the Lynn Public Schools in beginning to develop an educational opportunity for those who are struggling with discipline and maintaining their learning. We have been able to secure additional space at the Boys and Girls Club to begin the development of a learning center specifically for students who have been identified for a long-term suspension and who need in-person academic and counseling support. The number of suspensions is on the rise at the middle school level, and we are seeing more and more peer-to-peer aggressive behavior and substance abuse involvement at this level. Part of the solution exists in education, and that is where our effort is with this work. We need to build a more targeted intervention for middle school students engaged with substance and counseling support. As this resource is developed, we will share more with you around this work. We have officially entered the winter season, and as we all know, the New England winter can mean a lot of different things depending on the day. We've been fortunate so far that we've not experienced much in weather-related concerns. But I, and I want to assure you that everyone, to everyone, that there is no priority higher than the safety of our students and staff. Second to their safety is the importance of the school day and their education. As superintendent, calling a snow day is one of the hardest decisions to make, because we're at the whim of weather reports that are not always reliable. Monday was a very good example of that. I received feedback from a student and a teacher on the decision-making of that day. I acknowledged their concerns and responded to both, thanking them for reaching out. That being said, the decision was not made alone. The superintendent works closely with the mayor's office, DPW, parking commissioner, Lynn Police, Lynn Fire, and many other city departments. I also keep in close contact with local superintendents in support of each other in this decision-making process. It is a true collaboration. As you know, our school lots are used for off-street parking during snow emergencies so that plowing can happen without disruption within the city. This impacts our response as a school district. We will once again use the ability to have a delayed opening when the opportunity or situation allows. There is not a right or wrong answer in these decisions, but more a judgment call and collective discussions based on the information we have at that moment. Finally, I'm excited to announce that Kate Beal, an ELD teacher in our dual-language classrooms at Harrington School, has been selected to serve on a national kindergarten access for Ls Bias and Sensitivity Review Team in Washington, DC, in May. Our teachers continue to impress us with their hard work and abilities, and we are very blessed to have such dedicated and talented teachers.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. We need a motion for the executive session. If you could state the three items in motion.
Make a motion to move into executive session to approve the executive session minutes for January 12, 2023. Request for executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to LSAA. The discussion of these matters, which involve strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body. And also request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Dr. Yvonne Alvarez.
Any second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Move to go into regular session?
So moved. Make a motion to go to regular session.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right, we have three items to do here. The first is a memorandum of agreement between the Lynn School Administrator Association and Lynn School Committee regarding the manager of translation interpretation. And I think we need a motion to approve and authorize the superintendent.
Still move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. We also have an MOA between the LSAA and the school committee regarding the interim administrator of special education, and we need a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And the final is a contract of employment for the superintendent of schools.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Terry Greens, will we sign this one copy now?
We should have two, so we can keep a sign.
All right. Do you have the second copy? Okay.
Special pen tonight. It's a good one.
Will we sign? Perfect. Sounds good.
Do we have to sign the MOAs?
No, there was two.
Yeah.
Just two of them.
That's it. Okay.
Is everyone on tomorrow?
They'll probably pass them back this way.
She's going somewhere before that, she must be. So you know further business?
Move to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
How's it going?